To make sure, you know, that when our citizens pay the money, they need to use that money. And then I have a process.
Right at the out of here.
I can't be here. I can't be here.
How come we got a big computer screen in front of us? We can't see dogs.
Sure, sure, sure.
I guess they'll turn it on and later on it'll be up in the air.
Then they can hurl stuff at us without us seeing it come.
Yes. Labidum.
Well, that's for a nice time.
It was in the fall. It was, I think it was November, December of last year. I know it was November.
Well, I read through all of this and almost every word of everything. Well, then what does that do for me?
And then we did it at the beginning of this year so that they have the whole years of it. So it'll be reflected in our financial statements.
Is it hooked up? With this?
Sure.
Oh, it is.
Oh, it's not on. It's locked.
What's that? It's not hooked up. Do you see need to get it ready?
It says it's 6:30.
Is it?
Yeah. My computer thinks it is.
I got a half a minute yet. It's got power.
Is it?
No, my computer says it's 5:30. Mine's on Washington.
5:30, I should say, yeah. Let's call the meeting to order. This is the Bella Vista City Council Work Session for April 17, 2023. We're going to go a little bit out of order today. The very first thing we're going to do is the last discussion item, which is Kim Hall is going to talk about the financial statement. Take it away.
Give me just a second to set up your... The machine went asleep on me and I hope I didn't die, okay?
If you keep it lively, we'll be fine.
If we keep it live?
Lively.
Yeah. Well, I didn't, I found my spelling error, my gratuitous spelling error. So you'll be disappointed to know that you won't. Fingers crossed you'll find one.
There we go.
Technology is a beautiful thing at work.
Right.
Can, so if you guys might have a little challenge, just a little further on, things are going to get a little smaller. So at some point you may want to, that's why there's chairs back there in case you want to come towards the center. So I just wanted to take a moment and present some, the goal of this session is how do the financial statements, how do we navigate them and what are we doing? And how to make informed, efficient, effective evaluations of financial information. As a reminder, our monthly financial statements are unaudited. We yearly present an audited financial statement to the council by our auditors. Okay? So these are all unaudited. The 1231s are unaudited until they're blessed by the auditors. Okay? And why now? Well, it's New Year, a new council, and I thought it was the perfect time because I had some changes, I, updates I wanted to make. So I thought this would be a good time to talk about them. So the first thing we're going to do is talk about navigating the balance sheet. This is the balance sheet, the way you've seen it in the February statements that we just sent out. Okay? This is the balance sheet as I've updated. You know, it's a little more compact, right? It looks very, very similar, but it's just a little more compact. Where it's compact is restricted fund balance. Okay? The fact is, is that that's not necessary to run the city. So it's just extra information on a financial statement. And most financial statements don't record that on a monthly basis. So I just, I just compacted those. Restricted funds are funds that are legally required to be spent in certain ways. And then the other thing I compacted is assigned. As, as we've discussed in here before, assigned is mostly donations. You don't need to know who has what on a monthly basis because it changes by the material amounts. It's just not, it's, we're monitoring that for you guys.
Kim, so the new one, you haven't shared any comments about that.
No, no. This is, March will be your first month that you will see this new updated format.
So assigned, assigned and unassigned, those are administratively directed?
Uh, exactly.
Department heads and the mayor?
Assigned is, and we'll talk about this in just one second, but assigned is indeed council direction. Right? Restricted is it's legally directed. All right? So there's somebody has, you have a resolution that basically says impact fees can only be spent on certain items. And so that's what the restricted, so the legally restricted grants fall in that category. Okay? So here's a little tip, and this is a good tip for any balance sheet you ever look at. The first thing you want to know is, is is there enough cash to pay accounts payable? And in our financial statements in February, you can see there's $10 million in cash. And our accounts payable is 278. So yes, we have plenty of cash to pay our accounts payable. Now, it does present, to keep in mind, the moment I say this, people go crazy and they say, oh, yay, we're flush with cash. Today, we're flush with cash. We have commitments throughout the year. Okay? The other thing that puts an onus on me, and that is, I have started, because now we have interest rates that actually pay interest. They're not zero anymore. Doug. So we have gone through and we started moving money into funds, turn some revenue for the city. Just a little FYI, what are other assets? Other assets are those investments that I was talking to you about. So you'll see that other assets grows through the year compared to last year. Other assets is significantly higher. Okay? And that's not on here, but when you get the financial statements, you'll see that they're significantly higher than last year because we are now trying to earn interest. And we are using, our method currently is very short term, to three, six, nine, 12 months. Okay? Trying to maximize our interest, but keep money available for the significant amount of capital improvements that we've got on our agenda. All right? There's also a couple of other miscellaneous accounts receivable in there, small little things. So that's why other assets and not investments. Okay? And then back to the question you just talked about, restricted is legally restricted. Assigned is an example of assigned as donations, right? Unassigned is if they're not restricted or assigned, they're available. Available funds. So I wanted to talk about this particular thing on the financial statements that I, is on there right now. It's a metric. And what the metric does is it gives us a look at what the current unassigned fund balance is compared to the next year revenue or to the current year revenue. All right? Now, the reason I don't like, the reason this number is not one that is particularly meaningful to run the city is because it doesn't tell you about the commitments that are required by the budget that you guys approved. And it's not, you know, our expenditures and our use of cash is not on a regular monthly basis. It's on a calendar basis. A capital life, a capital project, where's the chief? Doesn't happen when you think it's going to happen. It can be delayed by months or years, right? So we have those commitments. When you do that on a monthly basis, it's not particularly meaningful. You have to have a hard stock of a number. So every year we go through an exercise at year end, Doug and I were just talking about this, where we look to see at year end what the unassigned balance is. And that's the funds that are available for us to determine our capital expenditures. So that's the number that we want. This other metric I'm going to remove from the financial statements this year. The more important number, I, I just have to smile because Doug came out, he came up and asked me about this just a few minutes ago before this started. And that is the more important number is on the monthly financial statements. You're going to see this, this unbudgeted, our non-budgeted request that come in from monthly, you know, i.e. the plumbing that we had last month. So we take what we think is the unassigned fund balance after all of our capital requests, what's left over, right? And then we deduct those things. And now we have $400,000 in unbudgeted. Those are things that were not budgeted last year in our budget process. And so we now have about $661,000 left. Okay? So that's, that's the more important piece of information that you want to look at. If we, if we spend more than $662,000 by the end of the year, more, right? Then we will be dipping into our reserves. That's why I say we have to think, yes, we have $1 million in cash, but technically speaking, only a million dollars of that is available. Any question? By the way, if you have questions, you can just, you know, hop in and ask. Okay, navigating the income statement. This is the current income statement and it's broken down into operating and restricted. And again, what do we know about restricted? Restricted is legally required. You know, and your department heads and I am going to be looking at what is restricted and making sure that those funds are spent in accordance with the restrictions. All right? So that's not really important information for monitoring the financial statements. What you want to look at is you want to look at the operating, the operating revenues, the operating expenditures. Okay? And in this case, what, what I would look at is when I put this together, the first thing I did was like, I was like, oh, oh, what's going on with property tax revenue? That's a negative $464,000. And then I went, eh, no big deal. Look where we were last year. We are 97th February. We're at 106th this year. So we know that revenues, property tax specifically, are not regular and consistent throughout the month. I mean, throughout the year. What do they do? They have their own, you know, they're all due and payable. April, is that right? Do I have that right? April?
October.
Okay. Okay. So they have to be in house by October 15th. So I think we get a bump in April and I think we get a bump in October. I don't know why we get a bump in April, but.
When the bills go out.
Property is October.
Okay.
Some people pay the bills immediately and some like to October.
Okay. I'm probably waiting till October. Anyway, so the first thing you want to do is you want to say, okay, yeah, so, you know, compared to budget, there's a little, hmm, really? So you want to take it one step further. Does this, does this, anybody have questions about this? Makes sense, right? So then, you know, here's one of our expenditures. Now, our expenditures has got a lot of information on it. So here's the, it has operating and it has capital, it has debt services, and it has transfers. Okay? But what do you really need to focus on? Want to focus on the operating because that's how we run this city. Right? So in this case, we don't have anything that's negative as a group. We don't have, you know, none of the departments have negative items. Okay? But if it did, the next thing you would do is you would look and you would see what it was the prior year. So in this case, I thought it was really interesting. Look how close admin, HR, and IT is between the two years at the end of February. I was like, what are the chances of that happen? That's like $200,000. So you just, you kind of want to look at both. It's not just the one or the other.
I just have a question. I think we budgeted so much over for 2023 versus 2022. And we did that on several of those, on several lines.
Well, that, you know, it would, um, let's, let's talk about that offline because that's a long conversation because we went through the budget process. Right? And I don't want to take up everybody's time because I know you guys have all these wonderful ordinances to talk about. And, but I'd be happy to sit down with you and go through that. So that's basically the, the income and, and balance sheet. And so the other thing on the financial statements that you guys get, it's always interesting, is to look at our sales tax. Okay? To look at the sales tax and what the sales taxes is happening. Now, you know, look at the January number for city. Isn't that interesting? Because when you look at January's numbers, you're looking at November sales. So this was an interesting month for me because our, our December number was, I'm sorry, our January number is slightly down from last year.
But that's really November data.
Correct. So Black Fridays in November. So I would have accepted, expected to see that equal to or more. But we know that there's things going on in the economy that may have hit that. Except, look at the counting number for January. The counting number is over. Do you see, you see my point? That really, so to me, I, hmm, yeah, I, there's, there's nothing significant going on there. Because then you look at, you look at the February number, and I suspect that there, that the state had a little hiccup or something and that they corrected. Right? Because they, they, from time to time, they might have an adjustment. So you want to look at like it's more than one month, is it two months? Is it budget to actual versus the prior year? You need to look at all of that as together. Okay, so last slide. Impact fees. These are unbudgeted. We don't budget them. We don't run them through the income statement. Why? Because we don't run the city using impact fees. So the decision was made to leave them as a balance sheet item. So every month I go put them as a liability to keep them out of the income statement. Okay? So nobody, nobody thinks that we're inflating our revenue. And then the thing to keep in mind is impact fees require a resolution to spend. Okay? So you guys are going to know if they spend. But here's why I think this is a key performance indicator. And that is because impact fees are about, are about building homes here. And we know that a significant portion of our economy in Bella Vista at this point in time is dependent on the continued building of homes. And so if this number were to have a problem, this would be, this would be my, my concern because other things would follow. We, I expected to see slight reduction because of raising interest rates. Right? That's what I expected, but we're not seeing it yet. I don't know where we'll be later, but those are the kind of questions. I expected to see a little down here, but it hasn't been. So I hope that was helpful. Does anybody have any other? Yes, sir?
You talked about building in Bella Vista. We have about 600 homes or whatever. Any material that's delivered, purchased anywhere around in-state, out-of-state, in the neighborhood or out of Bella Vista itself, any sales tax because the products and materials are delivered here should be charged and we should be credited for those. Is there any way to validate in some fashion or another?
Well.
Whether we're getting our fair share of those?
So the, the, we, we've had, there have been many, many conversations across country about, is that, what's that code called? Is it an SIC code? I think it's an SIC code. I think that's what it is. But, you know, businesses fall under a code and they report their income based on this code. Right?
Oh, the government identification for businesses?
Yeah.
The state does all that. So when they fill out a form, they say what their general business is category wise and what they've collected. And then the state, Department of Finance and Administration is the one that collects it for us and remits it to us. And as far as I know, we have no way to audit that they're doing it correctly.
We do not. Isn't, and this is my point. We even talked about it at, I think you were there when they were talking about it at my first session of AML. And the reason being is that like in Texas, I can tell you, I get a report that tells me that Lowe's paid this much to the city. Right? And each business, I can drill down to the individual business level. That information is not available in Arkansas at all. And it's a, it's a pretty big deal. So the, so we don't have the ability to look in to see if we're getting our, quote, our fair share. What I can tell you in between that and the fact that you, a lot of codes, you look at the list one day, you think you're this, you look at that list another day, you can go, oh, no, I'm this. There is no consistent requirement that you pick a code and stay with code. And so it's very difficult to even figure out what those codes really mean. It's very difficult. I did some analysis, saw that a couple of times last year, trying to, trying to make my best guesses. And finally, like Doug and I were at a conference, and finally I agreed and I just threw the whole thing out because it just, it just could not, there was just the reliance on a number that doesn't necessarily make sense. And how do you group them together to find out? Because what I wanted to know is what percentage of our sales tax was dependent on homes? Not just necessarily internet homes or delivered to property, but what, you know, because we have TH Rogers, we have, and it was, it, it wasn't up to make you just pull your hair out and go crazy because there was just, it was so inconsistent. But that's a good question. If you, if you want to lobby for something, and I know AML has lobbied again and again and again to get that information released to taxpayers.
I don't know that it necessarily needs to be distributed to the public, but it shouldn't be.
Correct. You're, you're absolutely right.
Information like other information you might have businesses.
I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Even in Texas, it's not available to the taxpayer. What, what happens is I have to sign a, I have to sign a confidentiality agreement. Right? And that information cannot be shared with the, the public. So you're right. But it should be available on some level. So we can do that sort of analysis, but it's not here. That's a good question. Any, any other? I wanted to get this first because I'm here, you guys, this was exciting stuff and I didn't want you to have to listen to. Pardon?
Only to be caught.
Hey, hey.
Well, thanks a lot, Kim. I do think it's helpful to give people some tips about the exact things to look at, a balance sheet, the income statement, whatnot. So I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And these things, well, by the way, not just city financials, these are kind of important many financials that you look at.
Okay. Well, thank you.
One last thing. On a year-to-year basis, if we went back to last year and looked at the January report, what it would show for revenue in January would actually would have been October or November of the last year as well. I mean, those are consistent from year to year to year.
Okay. So is it all right if I talk about that?
If, if you're fast.
Okay. I'll be fast. So you got an updated financial statement for February. So the mayor believes, and I, you know, I'm completely neutral on this, but believes that he wanted you to be able to take the February statement this year compared to the February statement last year for that very reason. So the last set of financial statements you got have February to February. The first ones, we're, you could only compare January to January. You couldn't compare February to February. But it showed you a difference. So going forward, we're going to hold the financials until the end of the month. So February sales tax does not get here until, I'm sorry, March sales tax does not get here until April 25th. So you will get the March financial statements in May. So that is, I, I started with that and then I thought, I put it in an email to you. So if you, and if you, by the way, I think everybody's getting those emails now. So if you have any questions or, you know, problems getting your email, please just let me know.
Maybe it'll be early by then.
Yes, I would imagine it'll be.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll be before the meetings, that's for sure, before your work sessions.
Yeah. So really, right now, since we're sitting here, we have end of February statement. And next month we'll have end of March. And if you don't have that timeline, the problem is your expenses will all be fine. But your revenue won't be any good because this is the city and county sales tax you're not showing.
Yeah.
And particularly since we're making them available to the public, I didn't want to put out a statement that's completely inaccurate, which basically is what it is if you don't waive. It's not sort of inaccurate, it's completely inaccurate on the revenue side, you know, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's start on the agenda. Item ordinance A, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of $74,570 for the purchase of two 2023 Dodge Charger police vehicles for use by the police department. I noticed in the materials that this is a replacement of existing. So anybody have any questions for the chief? Okay. Item B, Ordinance B, amending Section 281 sewer connections required of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Bella Vista Ordinances of the City of Belavista to require a sanitary sewer connection when service becomes available within 100 feet of a house lot or adjoining lot and for other purposes. This was put forth by myself. And, you know, in a prior month, I had mentioned or suggested an ordinance that would be within 100 feet. It did two different things, with 100 feet in any direction, which is what the village wastewater asked for. Right now it says 100 feet in the front yard. And there's people where the sewer is right in their backyard or their side yard because our streets are so unusual. And it had two parts. That was one part. And the other part was the 30 years, if it's 30 years old. And, you know, I had the sense council said, hey, we've got to talk about this. And I thought the first part, the 100 feet, was kind of non-controversial. So that's why I brought that back with just the 100 feet. It still has that, you can't tell by reading this, but it still has the same rule in it that it's only when the house is sold.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah.
This doesn't come in 28-2, which is the next section, but it has the exception.
So all this is, is the 100 feet.
Mayor, do we know how many new feet of sewer line they put in the last 12, 18, or 24 months?
I don't have that at my fingertips, no. So.
The last, I had spoken with them about a year ago, they were doing some modifications in their system by changing where things were routed to give them certain capacity, which allowed them to do more expansion on the Cooper Road area.
What I'm asking is how much is new? Not repaired, rebuilt, refixed, whatever. How much is new from 12, 18, 24 months?
Could we ask that?
I'm sure we left it asking to find out. It's just something, it'd be nice to know if there's anything new or these guys are just, you know, moving very long.
Could we ask the mayor to contact them and see if they could give us some kind of a report?
Anybody can do it. It's just about to go off in person. How much?
So that way it's official, you know?
You're an official, why don't we go out and ask them? Worst thing I do is they can stick it.
Well, I'd be happy to talk to them. I have met with them one time recently. But we do have a discussion item later in the meeting about possibly having a committee. So why don't we wait for that and see where that goes? Okay. Ordinance C, amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48097, county parcel number 16-21109000, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And I believe this is in, is this in the Metfield area, Tom?
Yes, it is.
Is it the Cart Barn? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Larry.
I have a question to help us figure out easily on these things without the formality of the parcel number and the project petition number and planning. Could we have something that says AKA the Metfield Clubhouse or AKA Reardon Hall or something like that in the title or somewhere's on here?
Well.
Is that possible?
You can put a street address. That's typically what you see, commonly, you know, and put a street number on there. In the packet, there's a picture and, of course, the legal description itself is not very helpful, just meets and balances. But I will do it however it needs to be done, but.
I'm just thinking.
All properties are going to have a name, you know?
Yeah.
I don't want to say McDonald's, you know, or some, you know, I don't want to, this is how it's normally done.
I understand, yeah.
I don't know how to do it. I'm not saying legally there's not another way to do it, but this is a legal document and it takes to, sometimes it's just a little difficult, but that's why we had this meeting so Tyler could come right in and say, hey, this is the clubhouse. It's kind of what we, I plan for us to do bad at this meeting.
Could we then put it in our agenda here as in a parenthesis, AKA Metfield Clubhouse or Reardon Hall or whatever to help? It makes it easier for us to figure it out.
There's no law that says you can't. And the city clerk is sitting right here and he puts together that agenda, so.
I'm just wondering if it would help the public out a little bit to find out where they're from, where they are.
Anything differently due will confuse the public. I don't say that, but it doesn't mean that we can't do something different, that can also be helpful.
In the minutes, I often, Mayor Flynn will say, this is commonly known as.
Right.
And I do put that in the minutes, but you're saying you would like it.
I'm thinking maybe at the end of the announcement in the agenda, just in a parenthesis that says here's where it's at, kind of.
They're not all, not all properties are known as, they're probably vacant lots.
They might be a vacant lot or undeveloped.
And so then they're going to call and say, well, isn't this one somewhere it is?
Yeah.
And it'll be dozens and dozens of phone calls.
Well, then you just say it's an undeveloped piece of land.
I know, but it will comp question. You know, Doug's staff, you know, get a lot of phone calls and they may not mind that.
Yeah. I'm thinking about our job making it easier rather than making theirs more difficult. Not making theirs more difficult.
I can more than, I'm more than happy to put a common street address on, commonly known as 123 Main Street. That's, we can do that, we can put a street address on.
If there is one, yeah.
Would that be part of the title that I'm reading if you did that or? I've just been making notes in here for the POA things because there's usually things you are familiar with. I've just been making my own note.
When you read the planning, the planning analysis of the request, they tell you in there where it is, so it is available.
It's all, every bit of it.
I know.
It's a little looking right there. A picture of it, the address of it, the name of it, the packet, everything. It's all there.
Okay, thanks for this suggestion. D is an ordinance amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48171 and county parcel so-and-so, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And I believe this is Reardon Hall. So this is kind of how the other POA, is there any questions about it? Okay, next one is E, amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48174, from R1 Residential Single Family to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And this is described as the Reardon Hall, the playground.
Is just immediately to the west of Reardon Hall.
Okay. Next one is F, a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Gina Porter to Belavista Arts Council for a three-year term ending April 22, 2026. And we did just get a description of her background and put it in there. I don't think it was in the packet. Were those handed out?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Anyway, I thought you might find that helpful. You know, there's just three people on the Belavista Arts Council, so, but she looks like she's extremely qualified. Next one's a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Elizabeth Duncan to position five on the tree advisory board for a three-year term ending May 1, 2026. And her background is on there also. It appears to be very relevant. Any questions? Okay. Next one is approving the mayor's appointment of Graham Edwards to position four in the tree advisory board for a three-year term ending May 1, 2026. And I believe this is a reappointment. Okay. Next one, I, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Garrett Excavating Inc. in an amount not to exceed 1.2 million for asphalt street resurfacing hot mix overlay. And I think there was some attachments showing about the bidding. Did you want to elaborate on this, Karen?
Yes, I do. So this is part of our joint over resurfacing budget. This is the hot mix portion of it. This year we're looking at doing 9.3 miles. We've had a little bid from Garrett Excavating at 106.55 or 10, which is less than we were expecting since most things have been going up in the economy. So we were real thankful for that bid. Just kind of been into the best use.
What do you know about this company? I mean.
So they're formerly known as DECO. They just did a name change last year. So they've bid previously, year after year after year. They're one of our regular.
DECO was a competitor in the, mostly in the private sector largely, but this, now they're going out to the public.
Yes, and we've had them before on our city projects.
Do they have their own hot mix plants? Do they buy stuff?
Yes, they do.
They do?
Okay.
Because I wasn't aware of where or how they got their asphalt, so.
Yes. Formerly known as DECO.
So the 1.2 million, using my prodigious math skills, I divide it by 9.3 miles and it's about 130 grand a mile, if anybody's interested.
Is that a lane mile or is that a two-lane mile?
It's the full.
When you say 9.3, that you're talking about two lanes?
That's the full width, yes. Sometimes they're 18, sometimes they're 20.
How much was that there?
130,000 a mile. And that's, I mean, that's not the way they bid it.
No, and that's what it ended up.
Yeah, and that's lower than it was last year, so.
The bid, I think the bid is below what we had last year.
We had 121.50 per ton last year.
You know, it's driven a lot by the price of oil, so it's a wildly dangerous metric. It could be anything next year, literally.
It's been a couple of years I came in and talked to Mike and asked him about the price of, you know, the asphalt price of slurry, right? And he did some kind of back and forth numbers to, you know, just kind of give a rough estimate. And at the time, it could have been three years, I don't think it was, time goes by so fast, it was like $60,000 a mile. So, and now this, it's about 130, so it's doubled in the last couple, three years, is that right?
Apparently, yes.
Since COVID, yeah.
I always felt when I was on that street committee, we were really fortunate because there were a number of years where it was right around, I remember 70 grand a mile. It really stayed low for, it's kind of like interest rates, it stayed low for a long time and you kept thinking our luck's going to run out someday and it did. Actually, I just looked at my notes, I had 134,000 actually a mile.
When the US was petroleum independent, the rates were cheaper.
Yeah, anyway, appreciate.
Okay, one last thing. So when you, was it last month? And I congratulated you on your new position, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, were you replacing Mike at that point?
I was the assistant at that point.
And now, you're now, you're the superintendent and run the streets department. Is that correct? Big job. Congratulations. That's really awesome. I've been Karen for six years since I've been on council and I've never felt being impressed. I mean, you guys are really all over what you do. So that is wonderful. And your partner back here?
Yes, Dan Downing is our assistant superintendent.
Assistant superintendent, so he's new in his position as well. So congratulations to both of you.
I'm glad you brought that up. I was remiss. I wanted to mention that Mike Button had retired March 31. He was real low-key about it, didn't want to party or anything like that. And so everyone may not have heard about it. And Karen was appointed to superintendent and Dan Downing was appointed to assistant superintendent. He's been a real hands-on guy, has been a head foreman for a number of years. So, you know, you always hate to lose an experienced guy and I thought Mike really was knowledgeable. But I feel really good about these two.
Yeah, they come from, and you guys, you know Belavista, you understand it. So I think it's a great move, yeah.
Okay.
One of the few women in that position. Right?
Okay. Resolution J, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into amendment number one to the contract with Height Jackson Associates PA in the amount of 49,350 related to large-scale development requirements for the street department wash bay. Is there, you want to maybe give a brief description of this project?
So for several years, the city's been trying to get a car wash bay for all of the city to use. And this year it's finally got approved by the city. And so it's going to be just behind the public safety facility, which is in our two departments. And we put this, we got an estimate from the architect engineer in the amount of 31.75. We signed that contract in February this year, but it didn't include the cost for the large-scale development. And that was probably a little bit of a misunderstanding on it. So originally the car wash was on the street facilities, large-scale development, but it was just a car park. And future, which meant that it had to start within six months for us to do that. Then it was included on the public safety facility buildings, but also as proposed or future, which meant the drainage calculations weren't included in that. So this amendment is to include that large-scale development.
The planning required in order to get approval from our planning department for permits and things, right?
Community development has agreed to administratively review the large-scale development as a cost saving. So as long as there's no way with the air ducts on that, so that should be a cost saving for the city. I know this 16,000 additional hurts, but they're going to try and have a statement on that as well.
So that was non-budgeted?
Oh, we have a budget for it. I just wasn't expecting the large-scale development.
Okay. I know it's budgeted, 261,000.
Yes.
So this.
So that's an approved, but.
Pardon me?
This will go out to bid and then one of those building numbers are going to be.
Yes, the deal was the extra 16 made it over 35,000, so then you need council's approval. So, yeah.
Okay.
One last question. Will this be able to, as an example, wash your large dump trucks and fire trucks and all of those kinds of things?
I'm not sure. I think the fire might wash differently, but it's going to be large enough for our dump trucks and equipment to certainly go through. I don't see why fire trucks fitting, but I didn't, I don't know the measurements.
Yeah, well, I'm using that maybe as a false example because they do a lot of polishing, spit polishing of those things in the fire department itself, so.
They do, they would be have to, so we're hoping.
But in the event that they wanted to run it through for salt or something in the wintertime, that would be an easy way to do that.
Right. Our dump trucks and equipment will fit in there.
Well, the other thing a lot of people maybe don't realize about the street department is they have mechanics that repair all the vehicles. So having that wash over there kind of makes some sense. I personally am very impressed by a mechanic who can work on all these different vehicles we have because they're not, you know, a lot of them are very dissimilar, so.
So the police department will be able to keep their vehicles clean in the wintertime when they got all salty and things?
As long as we are not below freezing. At that point, it's kind of recommended that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
On the fire department, Larry, the new facilities have specific runoff items to deal with the soda and whatnot and washing of the vehicles as part of the DQ permit they have to get on the new fire station and install them in the city hall, at city station, all your other places. So very quick to washing vehicles on their own fire station or with all the environmental things you have to do.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, that leaves just discussion items. And as you know, we started with one of the discussion items. The first one is setting up street and wastewater septic committees. That's something I think came up the other month during one of the meetings. So I guess we could take them one at a time.
Yeah, correct. So basically we talked about this last meeting briefly about maybe re.
about maybe restarting the street committee. And then because we have a wastewater septic issue at hand, maybe having committee to have, start focusing and thinking about that. I know I think Craig might have mentioned at that meeting that he had some interest in that sort of part of it. But I don't know how these, how you start forming these or how this goes, the processes. But I figured if we don't start talking about it, it won't happen, so.
Yeah, well, it's very, actually, it's an easy process because they're very much of ad hoc committees.
Love it.
And I will tell you, on the street committee, when I saw this was on the agenda, I took the liberty of calling some of the citizens that were on it. And Lee Clark was on it. He said he'd like to still be on it. He's been on it, I think maybe as long as we've had it. The other person on it is, this is the street committee, is Jimmy Foster. And he's here. He's sitting over there. He's been on it several years. He's from Plano and has a, I couldn't tell you exactly what his title was, but he has a background in running the city. And of course, Plano's 200,000 people, so they had a lot going on. Anyway, so he's been a big help on the committee. The third person who's on it is Richard Taylor, who ran in Ward III. Those first two said, yeah, I'd like to keep being on it. And Richard was, he said, I'm willing to still be on it, but if there's other people who want to do it, that's okay with me.
I appreciate your honesty.
Yeah.
That's fantastic, Kath. Let me reach out and figure out how we want to.
So we could get one or more people from council. You know, one of the big things, what brought up this discussion was that idea about having the 14 miles of unpaved streets. That's with new houses on those streets. And in the interim, before we had anything going, I talked to the street people and said, let's try to do two miles a year. If you did that, it would take you seven years to get through them. Plus, that's assuming there won't be new ones, which there will be. But she does have two miles on the things she just gave us, the 9.3 miles. So it's got two on it.
That's great news.
But that's a subject of great interest to people who live on them. As you can imagine, they build some nice house and half the time the builder says, oh, yeah, I'm sure the street will pave that next year or so, you know.
So the streets committee, right? And then you're talking about septic wastewater, whatever.
Yeah.
So are you thinking about two city council members on each one? Or you talk about one city council member and some residents, citizens?
You can do it however you wanted. When I was on the streets committee, I purposely had just one councilman, so the meetings weren't public. But you can put two on if you like and then just give a notice every time you meet. And I think the septic probably needs two. That's a big undertaking. Yeah, a big undertaking.
I would suggest that we make it a five-man committee. You've got three suggestions here from the past that were on the committee along with you, John, and that you add two councilmen in the street committee and that we create an ordinance that establishes that committee, provides an umbrella and oversight about what their authorities are and what their direction is. It would help us, I think, and it would help task that committee and the street superintendent, in terms of where their authority or direction is to be and how they relate to the, between that department and this council. So it would be an ordinance that would create the committee, create the committee itself. Three being appointed on a three-year term or four-year term or whatever, and then the councilman.
We have a street committee right after we became the city. There may be something on the books already about it.
There may be.
So I need to, I need to look at that and see what it says. I tend to think, like the mayor said, it was sort of an ad hoc committee that really wasn't official as such. But it was referenced a lot like it was official. So I need to make sure we haven't already adopted something. If we have adopted something, we just need to undo that so we can do what we want to do now.
Yeah.
It's not, that'd keep us from doing what we want to do.
I don't know.
It does depend on how we do it moving forward.
I don't recall seeing in our ordinance is anything about a street committee in there.
Well, it would have been done as a resolution or something.
Okay.
At the very beginning, they did a lot of stuff without any attorney.
I'm thinking that would be a much better formality for us and would provide more involvement of the council on that committee by having two people over there.
I would just offer this to you and for you to think about. In my experience, it is very common that a city council would have a committee on streets or a committee on sewer or a public works committee along with something. Committees of the council, like outside members.
Right, oh, not outside members.
You know, so we're going to have something. And obviously, it's a committee of the council that form the council as a making of the sewers. If we're talking about forming an ad hoc committee or of that nature, I guess they could obviously make a report to you like some of the other boards that we've created. And it's still going to be up to the full council what you want to do. You only have one member of the council on these. Of course, you do avoid the issue about the public notice and all of that. That can cut both ways.
Right, there's pros and cons.
Perception of things, just something else to think about. If you do have committees of the council, they would have to be open to the public, of course. You know that, so. Just some things to think about on that. And that applies both to street or sewer, septic issues. I think what I would also add is, what is the goal of this? What do you want them to do? What is it? Because in my, in my experience, whenever you create a board, the board feels like it has a duty to do something. And so, and then sometimes what authority the board has, if it's advisory in nature or whatever, it needs to be clear at the beginning to know that they really don't have the decision. I mean, they're advising, they're not deciding. And so getting all that straight up front is very important.
You were sitting on the city legal staff in Fayetteville. How are they organized in terms of the street and public works?
They had a street committee of the council and.
It's more advisory or is it?
I think they probably had a water and sewer. They had a water and sewer committee. They ran the utility through the city council. They didn't have an independent water works commission. And so those were, I guess, three members of the council. Of course, their council is bigger. They have a seven-member council, excuse me, eight-member council and four works team each. And so they would have, you know, have an odd number of people for whatever you do. That way they can make a decision. They don't get stagnated with the type of. But those are committees and they have meetings and public notice. And the street committee may have the street superintendent or have the street department to talk to the street committee about projects next year and whatever the council needs to know about the topic. So that's how committees work. You've never had council committees before that I'm aware of, so.
Well, my thought is, I think it's better to be more informal, not have an ordinance. An example is what happened with the street committee. You know, people were, they were taking a thousand-foot road and somebody building one house at the end of it and we were paving it. So Mike Button says, this is a problem. And the mayor said, this is a problem. So we made up a rule. It was the mayor's policy, the 150-foot rule, and I wrote it up. And then the mayor put it as a policy and we went by the 150-foot rule and it was working really well. Actually, I liked it. Mike Button liked it. Couple of years ago, council decided they didn't like it. So they voted, no, we're not paving anything. We're not committing to pave even one foot. So that's what they've done since. The point is, we changed it. And that, we changed it a couple of different times, rather effortlessly, because we didn't have all this, once you put all this formal ordinance stuff together, then it's hard to change things, do something different. I think it's better to be a little more flexible. You know, we've got plenty of formality in the work sessions in the city council and they have informal committees that actually accomplish things. This can be a good thing.
The work session should not be formal.
Yeah, okay.
Work sessions are more of an informal type of discussion.
Yeah.
If you want to just put a group of people together and then report to the mayor occasionally or have the mayor report to you or have the council member that's on it report to you or something. You can do those things informally, but we want a board, but we don't want a board. We want, you know, we need to decide that we want to have one to do it, I would say. If it's important enough to send it to the board, then send it to the board. If it's not, then you can still informally talk to people now without doing anything to bring it forward.
I do think the, I mean, roads are very important, but the septic to sewer is a very specific and challenging issue. I think it's by far the most important of the two right now. And I think that question is, which you guys did a pretty good job of raising, and we talked about it before. There's two questions. How do we get more people on sewer in the short term? And how do we get more people on sewer in the long term?
And the answer is build more sewer.
Well, just to be clear, though, it's, my view was more towards the sewer septic issue. Because that's, that's a big concern to me, which is not a room.
Well, we just have a lot of, we just have a lot of fact-finding to do first.
Exactly, yeah.
And another part of it too, you know, it's the septic part of it. And to me, I view that as an educational piece right now. You know, what can we do short term? And then just ask some questions. Is there anything we can really do long term? And try to understand what that might potentially be.
I could, not to intervene in the discussion that you're supposed to have, but you know, you can, you're grasping in the dark. It's totally dark and you're reaching. Get someone to give you information. Get a step of some sort. Get someone that's feasibility or, or something to do with it. Someone to analyze the current situation. Look at how many septic tanks there are. Figure out how many miles of street have village wastewater on it.
That's what I'm talking about, Jason.
And then the council can, you know, that's the one you would be outside. This committee was formulated, they're going to be well-meaning, but they're not going to be much more informed than you are on some of these issues. They're going to have to get information, so. Generally, the first step, I think, when every city's going to break out into something new or different is what is defining the problem? And we don't even know if we can define the problem yet. We've got to figure out, we got to know what we're doing that we don't know.
I just defined the problem. We need more people on sewer.
Okay, how many more? How many will appear in time?
You want to put them all on sewer tomorrow?
No.
Be in private sewer, be in state sewer.
I guess I was thinking this committee would, first thing they do would be engage in the fact-finding.
How big a deal is it to move from an ad hoc committee to a more formal?
Write an ordinance to create a committee.
So we've had an ad hoc, want to just get some ground footing and then create?
Sure, I mean, this committee has no authority to do anything. Basically, it's going to be a member of the council and some dedicated people in the community interested in the issue. Do you want to call it a study committee or?
Kind of advisory, yeah.
Define what is we need done, that's not being done, and then figuring out how to do it better. So what is it we're trying to be done? And then how best do we do that? Is it a committee? Is it a council committee? Is it a, what is?
So the mayor could create a, what is it? A search committee or a?
Well, I'm trying to avoid that. I've been around in Hawaii and I've seen it happen once. We go all in to an issue with no clear endpoint of what or, and we lose steam in it and it just gets lost and it just fizzles. And so I hate to see us do something like that on some of these important issues. That's it. That's it there.
What was my point was that if we could at least get some kind of engineering, just something to get us the groundwork, just to get an idea of what we're looking at moving forward. And that's the only thing that I was getting at the last, the last time I talked about this.
I'd volunteer to work on that for one of the council members, but I think we should have more than one.
Why don't we invite the head of village wastewater to a work session? And if they're willing, because it's a private organization, they have no obligation to do so. Say, we've got a lot of questions on the future of sewer and to talk to them about it and find out what's going on.
I have a question for our planning staff, CDS. Do we have a plan or a map from village wastewater that shows where their sewer system is? Their collection system is, if you will?
No.
So we got nothing?
We got nothing.
I think they have a map.
What?
I think they have a map.
They have a map on GPS or GIS. I know they have a map, but I just wondered if you guys had a copy of it. They are working with an engineer on mapping their system. So I know they have a map at least a year ago when I last talked with them.
They have not been real forthcoming about wanting to work in the city or give any kind of info to the city. Is that not correct?
We don't know that. We haven't asked them.
I don't know if we've asked them, formally asked them.
No.
I know we approached them when we did the 2040 comprehensive plan and I think hands were thrown up in the air and walked away.
Okay, I think we ought to ask them questions right now that a committee, if you want to call it that, or two council members, whoever you want it to be, to go out and ask those questions directly. Because tonight, we don't have those answers. That's what part of this exploratory.
This whole thing is all about.
Would be, yes. And we don't know enough to know what we don't know or what we do know right now. We need to go out and have some conversations, you know, with people.
I do know they have a map and they have it on GIS. And we don't, I think our consulting engineer, as the city engineer, Garber would be able to take that document, digital document, and print things for us, overlay them in our system, like our street system and whatnot. I don't know that they are able to give us a map necessarily other than their map of their system without streets underneath it. I don't think they have a base map of the city, unless they got one from the POA.
Who wants to do it?
We still need to go and get ahold of someone who knows what they're doing and do a study. And I mentioned that before, someone from the university or someplace and make it a project for a class, either a graduating class or senior class, you know, pay money for other things, you know, dangle a little bit out there. Let them come out here and do it as a project. You know, we would then get a basic idea of what we're looking at. Maybe even a basic idea of dollar wise.
What you're suggesting is, is that we contact the U of A engineering department.
And ask them if they want to do that.
And ask that they would make it a class project.
And I don't know what Crowder College used to have a course on that. And they're just up the street. I don't know if they still have it or not. Crowder College.
Oh, and?
They're just across the line anymore and they don't let you know if they have it anymore. But, you know, we're looking for information, star of information. And we don't certainly have the expertise. So we hire people to do everything else. So let's, you know, a couple of people, go contact them. Those who would like to be on the committee, take a walk up there and see if Crowder does it or get ahold of the university. You can probably do it through the community colleges instead of going all the way to Fayetteville and see if they got something like that and what they think about it. Because how are we going to get the information? Oh, you're going to have to ask somebody.
Well, I'll take part in anything that needs to be done.
Yeah, and I would, I would suggest, you know, not that I'm a short-term or anything, but those we put on the committee are going to be here one. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel every couple of years. You know, someone who's going to be ongoing. This ain't happening overnight. Someone who's going to be ongoing, who's willing to shepherd it through at least to some point where we can make that determination point A, point B come out.
State has a lot of information through the health department. The gentleman that came and spoke to us six, eight months ago when we were talking about short-term rentals. That person knows a lot and has probably got access to a lot of data. That would be very.
Well, you know, they could be involved too.
You're talking about the septic systems?
Yes, I mean, that's, I mean, that's part of the discussion as well.
Yeah, we're going to figure out both ways because you're not going to do this whole place ever sewer probably.
And they have all of the licensing and the review of the sewer treatment that's on it in our city. We don't know what they've got. All we've got to do is ask. Someone's got to have the technical knowledge to glean all that stuff and make some sense out of it, to figure out what the scope of the problem is. Get through the problem, what the problem is, but the extent of it, time taken. Is it a 50-year problem, or a 10-year problem, or a 100-year problem? That tells you a lot.
Arkansas Department of Health has a Plan Review Section for Sewers and for Water Systems. And so, they have district engineers, and we're District One up here in Northwest Arkansas. They have an engineer, and a staff engineer, and an environmental technician.
This isn't the, this isn't the kind of issue where we sit around and think, I know a guy.
Right.
You don't, you don't do that. And I just, we need to have a degree of really thoughtful formality and review of this, because it's a big one. And if you do it wrong, and this room will own all people, if you don't do it right. So, I've talked about it, I'm sorry.
So do we have to appoint a group to do this? Or do you just volunteer and get together and do it on our own?
You haven't had the agreement to do anything yet, you know. Larry, you're, I know you're firmly behind the opinion, but there are other terms of the council, and the council has its part in the issue yet. Put together an ad hoc committee, have them meet a few times, see what they say. Then, when it comes time to really start doing something, you're going to need to get more serious.
Well, someone that, from a citizen standpoint, that would, I think, be very interested in a sewer and septic is Daniel Ellis.
Oh, okay. That's good to know.
And Brent Stein spring is as well.
Who is?
Brent Stein spring. And he was on the 2040, I think, committee, but he definitely expressed interest. Yes.
Springfield, yeah.
He was on the sewer state?
Yeah. He was definitely interested in joining and working and helping.
Okay. That's good to know. The person in the audience here, Jimmy Foster, knows a lot about it, and actually was on Village Wastewater Board for a short time. Well, I just, I would, I could try to go ahead and put together a suggested committee. You guys have given me some great ideas. I think Larry needs to be on it from City Council.
I think Craig was interested as well, or being.
It's, I'll, I'll be at whatever capacity the city needs me to be. But that's what I mean, is I don't, I'm just kind of sitting here absorbing everything. I don't really know a direction. I don't have any idea what needs to be done. I think this, one of those things we can kind of stew on.
Get information, yeah.
Yeah, just kind of get a direction before we, you know, go to beat first.
Yeah. If we have more than one council person on there, Attorney Kelly?
It's a public meeting.
We need a public meeting, but we could still have it as a, what would you call it? A search committee or whatever?
Oh, whatever you call it.
Yeah.
Two council members are involved.
Everybody worries about a public meeting. All it takes is a phone call to tell them you're having one. All it takes, and if the man wants to.
It's not a big deal for me. It's a big deal for other people.
Yeah.
You're afraid to let the public know what you're doing?
No, no, I said, it's not a big deal for me to let them know.
Everybody worries about, oh, you got to have two guys. So what if you have two guys in your public? You have one guy you don't, you have two guys you do. It's not a big deal. But it's like, for some people, it really is.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be.
You notify the clerk?
All it takes is a phone call.
You put the three hour notice out there, so you got to notify her at least four hours ahead of time, to give her a little time to get things together. And so, or the day before.
But some people worry about it.
Yeah, right. Yeah. It's not, it's not a big deal. It really isn't. Just a formality, you have to go through the hoops, right?
Okay. I'll go ahead and get something started, and I'll also talk to Frank Knight about coming to the work session next month, if he's willing to do that.
That'd be great.
Okay. Why don't we move along? Next one is citizen request for review of current parking ordinance.
Yeah, I know, I met with a gentleman, I think Craig mentioned that he had as well, the citizen who was.
Oh, yeah.
The parking ordinance. And I know they came, he came, and a few other citizens who were also expressing interest as well, came to talk. I told them, met them, I told them I didn't really care for a majority of what he was proposing, but that I'd bring it for as a discussion item, and if anyone decided they wanted to really go for it after that, they could, but he's wanting to amend the, he has a packets last month.
He's the one that spoke to our council meeting?
Yes, and he has a package, yeah.
Yeah.
And basically, he wants to propose that, say that being prohibited vehicles, which be like RVs, trailers over five by 10, and other such vehicles would be allowed to park before the front of the houseway without barrier, and could possibly pay a fee to the city, permitting licensing. I had much reservation because of, in my head, it was the chicken situation, where we can say, yes, it sounds great, let's vote and pass this, because we want this, and the ACC has rules against it, which they do. It could put our citizens at, in a lawsuit.
I can speak to this very topic. I was here, and so, toward the beginning of the city's existence, there was a decision to pass an ordinance that dealt with some of these, it was called parking, but really it was RVs in the yard, and it's more than what the city typically knew, the city parking like meters and stuff like that. But we addressed that, and the reason the city addressed it was very particular reasons, and that was, they wanted to adopt rules that mirrored what the covenants of the ACC required, and because the city wanted to take a legal and providing that type of enforcement action. The city was going to be the head when they came to that issue. And why that, the city was made, I can't speak to it, Mayor Anderson and the council at the time, and just discussion with them. So that's something the city should be more involved in, because it's related to parking. And so, the city adopted an ordinance that mirrored that rule. What people do not understand, and I'll try to explain, and people should understand it is confusing for people that aren't trained in this area or in law. So, no disrespect intended, any of it. But we can make this legal all day and change the rules, and then the ACC person can knock on the door and start suing them and pull one in their house. We cannot make okay with the ACC just because we, just because we say there's ordinance that says it's okay. And these people were new stuff, the ACC is absolutely not a liking of that, if they go ahead and do that. They're frustrated, I'll let them speak to their frustration on that. But, the reason we have the rules we have is to mirror. And if we start making it different, they're going to think, hey, I can do it now, and they actually are not going to be able to do it. That's what's going to happen.
Look, so regardless of the ACC or not, right? I could tell you, by and large, there's no stomach, and there's no support for any type of an ordinance in regard of what's been proposed to us. I, you know, just do little straw polls, I know a lot of people live in, I could tell you that there's not been one person that would be supportive of passing an ordinance that would allow closed-in trailers, boats, RVs to be parked forward of the front plan of the house.
Lawn care trailers?
At all. Lawn care trailers, it would involve every type of.
Utility vehicle.
Vehicle, trailer, or anything. I mean, there's no restriction on size or anything, and there's just no stomach for it, by and large.
And I've already received emails from citizens who were concerned about it, and also, I, the gentleman also, kind of like, was feeling out things in different various social groups on social media, and there's a lot of commentary, and I would say, just rough estimate, I've read probably a couple hundred comments, 90% were very much against any change in this as well. Even if we didn't have the ACC situation against it too.
Well, I didn't, I didn't physically meet with the gentleman, we had a phone conversation. But that's, after that phone conversation, I spoke with Jason.
I did as well.
And immediately extinguished any consideration, so.
It's not that we're necessarily reinforcing the POA rule, not the POA, the ACC rules. It's that there's no point in us adopting a rule that's contrary to what the ACC says if it's.
Putting citizens at risk.
If it has meaningful and reasonable value.
You do, I mean, let me just be clear on this. There are parts of the city of Bella Vista that are not subject to the laws.
Right, exactly.
Due to late covenants and declarations.
Yeah.
So, those ACC rules don't apply, and the only rule that applies is our covenants. But these are not those, what, I mean, the people who are raising this issue are.
In town.
Are in the areas controlled by them.
And some of, some of the non-Poa land areas in the city are agriculturally zoned, and so they have different rules than does residential and commercial zoning. So, all of that has an effect. One prime example is the, is that the ACC prohibits any farm-type animal in pure possession. The city code allows so many chickens, which means that non-Poa property then can have chickens, or if they're agricultural, can have ag animals. So, all of that is, you know, a whole different scenario.
But aside from the ACC, majority of people aren't for this anyway, so.
The ones I've read, like.
Let me just throw this out, and it's got nothing to do with what we're doing, okay? But ACC was originally put together to be our building code for us. We didn't have it, county approved it, okay? So we got to be a city, and we built our own rules, based on whatever else. ACC book is about the A thing. Now they enforce three things. Everything else they ignore, they let us do it. So why are we worried about these three things? It's the same principle as in the covenants. POA is going to do streets, fire, and police. The day we became a city, the city did police, fire, and streets. And we get no reimbursement from the POA because we're doing their job. It's like we're picking and choosing what we want to play with.
Well, the opposite.
And maybe take a test case like this trailer thing, or maybe a white fence thing, and take a test case, and see just what ACC is going to do.
What I was going to say is that we've got the opposite situation when it comes to signs. We have the proliferation of political signs in the yards in residences. Covenants do not allow that at all. And they have, they have taken a policy in the ACC of not, basically not enforcing the rule. They're private rules. Now, we're bound by the constitution, we've got to, you know, we can speak, you know, we've got to be concerned about these things. And so, we've got rules that allow those signs. The ACC can come forward, they can residential zones, you're allowed to have real estate signs, and that's it. And in commercial zones, you can do more than that. And when I say zone, I'm talking about their private zoning. I'm not talking about our city zone, to make it even more confusing.
It's just like we're, you know, it's Cooper and ACC, oh, the big bad man, we're not even going to try to do something about it.
Well, we can't change their rules.
And I'm saying we can't change the rules, but the, first word out of everybody's mouth is they're going to take us to court. Well, let's take a test case and see.
They're not going to take us to court.
They're going to take Thompson to court. You want to find the right person who's willing to do that. You know, take the heat.
I'm not that person.
Or at least stick his neck up, and see, but we don't even know how they would go. Of course, you talk to them, it's like talking to that sign, but that's neither here nor there either. They're not enforcing according to what they even set up. You know, and see, they're all or nothing, instead of, oh, one from column A, two from column B, and I want that one over there.
If we were as arbitrary as some other organizations in this town, we'd be sued every day, all day long. We cannot.
Okay.
And, and I say that because they can do it, and they have done.
Yeah.
Well, I know they come after people, I don't get them wrong, I know that.
One of the challenges that we do, that I deal with, that I think our staff deals with, is the fact that we hold them to rules. We can't just say, hey, it's okay, don't worry about it. That's not been the history of Bella Vista for decades. And getting people to switch that mindset is one of the greatest challenges we have in anything we do right now.
You know, well, half the people doesn't, can't even tell the difference between us and them anyhow. I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Oh, yeah. Would the city have any liability if we said, yes, let's change this, and someone got sued? We would have, so the hell, or it could be like, well, you said it was okay.
I'm not saying it was okay, it's not that long.
Okay.
Well, like I said before, regardless of the ACC, whether they exist or whether they do not exist, there is not any stomach for this, or support for this, from the community at large. If you would put this to a vote of the residents on a ballot, it would go down in flames, big time.
Based on what I saw, that, that would be accurate.
The example is really the chicken thing, is that, I have people that I know in the city that live in POA property that have chickens, right? They like their homegrown eggs, and so they have chickens. Well, it's okay by the city code, and in one case, they called the ACC and said, hey, is it okay to have chickens? And the ACC said, no, can't have chickens. And they came and made them take them away.
This is a, I mean, I wouldn't be shocked if I, we live in a largely privately developed, covenant and control community.
Right, yeah.
I can't believe, you guys are completely surprised by the fact that there are rules related to that, and most of them are.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. Reorganizing, citizen input section of meeting based on agenda items.
That's me again, sorry. Larry Kelly, at the last meeting of public comment, has something that really interests me, in that having, instead of just being all the top of the meeting, if a citizen had something to talk about, and it was about parking, they could sign up to speak at that section, and that'd be their time to speak. If they didn't have any, it was on the agenda, they could speak in the open forum section, if it was a, just something they wanted to talk about, or got off their chest, or mention. I think it's interesting, I like the idea that it keeps those comments, you have four against any item, really, just with the actual issue, so you don't get lost. But I also understand that it could cause maybe even greater length in meetings, and cause me other issues. So I just wanted to kind of see what everyone else thought about his suggestion.
I guess one thought is, is that other cities in our northern, Northwest Arkansas area do business differently than we do, where we have input at the beginning of the meeting. There are some that allow input as the subject is brought forward, and I think you have to sign up for it, but, and we could do a little bit of survey. I don't know if that's easy to do with the clerks' system or not, to do a survey of the clerks up here.
Are you talking about through the AML?
How they, how they take public input at council, at formal council meetings.
You could do it, but I, I probably do it for Northwest Arkansas, but I could certainly do it for the whole state easier.
That'd be great.
And we can look at other cities of our size as well, if you do it across the state, because there are others that are large like us, that are not, that are not Little Rock as an example, but are large enough that have substantial populations that.
It really has been, I know until just a few years ago, Ben Hill had no public comment at your council meetings at all. They have modified that process. Having had some experience working in Fayetteville, and we were there process, and they have personal opinion and overabundance of public comment on every item. And they had some very hot topics down there, they'd go until three or four in the morning with meetings. And my personal view on that was that the council meeting is for the council members to debate, and it turned that into like, the public is engaging in the debate more than the council members are engaged in the debate. And certainly, information from the public and opinions from the public is important. But you need to hold your authority close, because it is your job to debate and make these decisions. So, to me, I think there's some balance between those things.
In your time in.
It's not necessarily what we're doing now, it's not what we have to do, but.
In your time in Fayetteville, were citizens relegated to like, one, like, hey, you could get, you can speak, but pick a topic to speak on?
No.
Or they could sign up for?
They could speak, they could speak to every item on the agenda.
Okay.
So, item one is ordinance admitting, resume, blah, 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 blah. Okay, well, we're going to take public comment, so John Doe speaks on that one, then they get through, and there's really no time limit on it.
Yeah, I know, I've watched several.
And it's sort of open ended, except you get one turn, and then they vote, then the council will do its thing, they vote, go to the next item. And John Doe comes back up and says, I mean, you can have someone speak on your item on the agenda.
Okay.
What that turns into, instead of getting your two minutes, three minutes to speak?
Yeah, that's really bad. I have a couple thoughts on this. The first one is, to my knowledge, Mr. Kelly does not live in Belavista.
Yes, I do.
No, I'm talking about Larry Kelly.
Oh.
Oh, did he move?
Yeah.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So this would be an interesting thought experiment. I'd like to have a regular citizen go to Bentonville and get up at their meeting and say, hi, I'm from Belavista, and I think you should run your meeting such and such a way, and see how far you get. Not very.
What happened in Fayetteville was they had a lot of out-of-town speak on their controversial people rights ordinance, and there were people that, outside Fayetteville, that come and speak, they changed the rule, got to authorize the citizens first, and then if you were outside of Fayetteville, you had to speak after that. That was how they, but they did change the rule.
Well, I was at a Benton County meeting, and there was a number of people from Fayetteville weighing in on an issue, which I found quite interesting, since it wasn't even their county, but whatever. Anyway, yeah.
It's been long for none.
I'd like to see, like, what, how other cities do, how they run, and how, if it's successful for them, if they, is it agreeable average, like, meeting length? Like, are they having these marathon meetings? I've watched several from Fayetteville, I lived there, and they would, each go to sleep because they still be going.
You can survey the clerk for each of the communities up here, but I think you'll find that the predominance is that they do it like we do it, where everybody gets to do an input on whatever subject they want to speak on before the meeting begins. You have the input when you come to that item on your agenda, and you take their thoughts.
Okay.
I think the way we're doing it works just fine right now. Everybody, you know, gets their comment, and if you, if you want to respond to it at that particular time-
You can.
You can, or you can reserve the time for when the actual ordinance or resolution comes out.
Perfect, yeah.
And otherwise, if we, you know, open it up, our meetings could be incredibly long, for, maybe not for a good reason.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I'm all for public comment, I have no issue with it, at all.
Absolutely.
Now, I've been accused of having an issue with it, and I don't, but, you know, so I think the way we're doing it right now works, works just fine.
That's a good thing.
So that's the end of the agenda, does anybody have anything else? Okay, in that case, we're adjourned.
Right after the roof falls in.
Yeah, there you go.